He's still here.
I know playing, so that's the best way to get nominated is not show up in elections.
Are we? Are we recording?
Yes.
Oh.
Okay.
He heard you.
Welcome to the January seventeenth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a citizens advisory committee to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the Comprehensive Plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. We welcome public comment on those topics for which a public hearing has not yet been held. My name is Eric Casino. I'm this season's chair and serve at large. I live in the Lacey UGA. We will continue the roll call of the planning commissioners here in the boardroom and then move on to our online commissioners and we'll start down here with you, please.
Ooh, Daniel Bombarber.
Joel Hanson, I live in the fourth district. District.
Derek Day, I think I'm still in district one.
Scott Nelson, district four.
Kevin Pestinger, and I'm not in district one anymore. I'm in district five.
And then I do believe we have Sandra Kaiser online. We'll do sound check and introduction.
Hello, I'm Sandy Kaiser. I live in district five.
Great, thank you very much. And then are we going to do an introduction of our staff today?
Yes, and then if we could reserve a few moments for Commissioner Mensah to say a few words, that would be great. It's probably introductions.
Yeah.
Ashley Rye, um, community planning manager.
Andrew Bond, associate planner.
Amelia Schwartz, associate planner.
I'm sure.
Well, thank you very much. I hope everybody's had an opportunity to look over the agenda. We are going to make one addendum to that, and that is to provide Commissioner Mensah an opportunity to speak. Is there? Would you like to do that first? Do you think?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be great. So with the amended agenda, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the agenda as amended. I'll call for the vote.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Pestinger. Commissioner Nelson.
Hi.
Commissioner Casino.
Hi.
Fisher Day.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
I'm so sorry. And Commissioner Kaiser.
Hey, hi.
All right, our agenda is uh, has been accepted. Uh, with that, we will move on to Commissioner Mensah.
Thank you. First, I want to say Commissioner Kaiser, you live in district three.
Bless you, my son.
My end district appointment, so anyway, good evening to everybody. Um, my name is Time Answer. I know most of you. I am the incoming chair of the Board of County Commissioners and want to welcome you all to twenty twenty four, welcome you all. Uh, and thank you for your willingness to serve as planning commissioners for Thurston County. I think the board I certainly, I think the board agrees that the planning commission is kind of the granddaddy of all county advisory committees and boards. Um, it's enshrined in state law to provide recommendations on uh, what are, in my humble opinion, the most important issues that the Board of County Commissioners faces. And why do I say the most important issues? Because land use issues are about Thurston County's core identity. Uh, our county has a dual urban rural nature, and I think we all like it that way. But it's hard to maintain that as we grow. Land use decisions are at the forefront of that evolution and are, and they define the Thurston County that we're going to leave to our kids and grandkids. And why do I say the granddaddy of committees? Because you don't just draw on your personal experience, um, and give us your opinion. You take public comment. You educate yourself with voluminous written materials. You ask questions and work with staff experts. And then you carefully deliberate among yourselves to provide well-informed, thoughtful, and balanced recommendations to the board. That is absolutely huge for the board in helping us navigate the complex and important issues of high public interest and high public impact that you guys tangle with. I know the material can be pretty dense at times. The wireless code in and of itself almost made me want to resign. And I'm paid to do this job. But, um, we're very proud of the work that our planning commission did over the last year and basically two years from the Grand Mound projects to the joint plans, to the shoreline master plan, to the wireless code habitat conservation plan, you name it. Um, you got a lot done and it's impressive record and we were, um, you know, very proud of what the planning commission accomplished and helped the board accomplish and therefore the county accomplish. So now it's twenty twenty four, we have five county commissioners and that created the need for us to restructure. But we heard you about the need for continuity. And we are very proud to have been able to reseat every planning commissioner that was able to or had willingness to be reseeded. Um, so although we technically started fresh uh, and expanded the board to ten, six of you are the same commissioners that worked so successfully in twenty twenty three. Eight have now been seated and would have been nine except Olympia City Council grabbed one of Commissioner Claus's appointee or nominations. Um, but we, we, I have talked to both other commissioners and they've got people ready and we expect you to have a full ten by the, probably by the next meeting. That continuity, though, reflects the respect that the board had for the work that was done by last year's planning commission and we're very excited about the new appointees as well. So I know there's lots of work ahead. We know you're up to the task. Our expectation is simply that you work productively and respectfully, both together with each other and with county staff. We ask that you strive for consensus, and if you can't get there, that's okay. Um, but ultimately, the board has to find a position that works for the entirety of the county and the whole of the community. And to the extent that you can orient your work and help your work advance that goal, we all benefit and we appreciate the effort. If not, that's fine too, and you can drop it on the, on the board's lap and that's why we're paid the big bucks. So again, I want to thank you. You are very, you are very much appreciated. And please let us know how we can better serve and support you. Um, and then go forth and figure out all those tough issues for the board.
Thank you very much. Does anybody, I don't know if you're going to field any questions. Anybody have anything for Commissioner Mensah?
Your comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Daniel and Sandy, I met a little bit, but, um, new commissioner and, um, you know, five of you guys and Barry.
Yeah.
Just happy to have you all back.
Thank you very much. All right, well, let's move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the meeting minutes from our December twenties or our December sixth, twenty twenty three meeting. And if anybody has any discussion on these meeting minutes, we can have it now.
Move to approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio as the official record from December sixth, two thousand twenty three.
There a second?
Second.
There any discussion on these meeting minutes?
Seems like there was more laughing that was not recorded.
It's been moved to approve the meeting minutes and accept the audio as the official meeting record of our December sixth, twenty twenty three meeting. Call for the vote.
Commissioner Pestinger.
Hi.
Commissioner Nelson.
Hi.
Commissioner Casino.
Hi.
Commissioner Day.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Bombarber. Commissioner Kaiser.
Bye.
These meeting minutes have been accepted. Thank you very much. All right, well, with that, we will move on to the public communication portion of our of our meeting. And, uh, for those via Zoom, please choose the raise. Do we have anybody online tonight that is not? So, oh, we do. Okay, good. Can you click over to that? Thank you very much. Great. For those participating via Zoom, please choose the raise your hand option to address the planning commission. You will be promoted to a panelist when it is your turn to speak and be seen. To be seen, please turn on your camera. If you're dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. Make sure you also choose star six to unmute yourself. The three minute timer will show on one of the video screens to help you keep track. And I do see that we have Phyllis Farrell up. So Phyllis, we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you. Could you hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, well, I want to thank all of you for your service and this is a little picky. Uh, but I can only see one little piece of the table. Is there a way to uh, have the camera focused on the entire room or at least a bigger spot of it?
That, that's outside my technical ability, but we'll have somebody work on that a little bit if they can.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
All right. Is there anybody else online that would like to address the planning commission? Is there anybody here in the room that would like to please, please come forward? And if you could let us know who you are and, uh, what area of the county you live in. Do we not have a microphone there?
Yeah, is it okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Jeff Merriman. I was here at the August second meeting. Um, and at that meeting, I was proposing or or asking the planning commission to consider my comment of um, adding cannabis um, to the definition for agriculture and also adding it as a allowed item under agritourism. Um, there was a motion made by Mr. Day. Um, and then it was tabled and it was brought back again and discussed and then um, by the end of the meeting, it was voted and approved in, but there was a lot of confusion. Um, because uh, Maya thought it meant one thing. Um, I thought it meant another thing, so I came here tonight to ask because um, we have eighty-five cannabis farmers in our county, and if one of them wants to teach a class how to grow cannabis, they have to get a lot of different permits for the event. But someone that wants to hold a wedding qualifies for agritourism. And so, um, it was just one of those things. I'm here for clarification by Mr. Day, what he was meant by it, because when I go back through the audio and it does skip around, um, it tends to believe that it was being identified as an acceptable item under agritourism and the fact that because it's a plant that it would be considered under the definition for ag. And that was it. Um, but there's other stuff coming down the line here later this year in terms of building codes for cannabis, uh, but nothing for agritourism or agriculture. So I'm just here to ask for clarification by Mr. Day that made the motion that everyone passed. What was his thoughts?
Do you want to address that?
So I, um, not remembering exactly the wording of the motion, um, I would say that I think the intention was that, um, I think as you suggested, cannabis be included in the agritourism, um, allowable uses, but I think we're really only um, able to make a recommendation to the board. So.
As it was reflected in the recommendation letter, it was a recommendation to the board to consider during the docketing process the updates that Mr. Merriman, um, shared with the planning commission during, um, during the hearing.
So our recommendation to the B O C C was to add it to agriculture and?
No, it was to docket it because most of the cannabis related provisions exist in a different chapter outside of the long-term ag ag chapter and the agritourism chapter. And it was just outside the scope of what the stateholder work group and the the other engagement that had occurred before that hearing. And so we have provided like the transcript um, of the motions.
Docketing is not a word that's used in any of the video.
Go ahead.
I vaguely remember this discussion and I felt like we intended to uh, meet the needs of the request from the community. And that we were told that there were limits on what we could do and not do. But that we had the intention of coming as close to meeting the needs that were expressed as possible.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think we were just trying to get it to be considered a year or two from now on a docket. I think we were trying to
I don't know how.
Forward as we're allowed to.
Yeah, I don't know how we could do anything outside of the docket, though. So our ask was for them to consider adding it to a docket item somewhere. But I don't know if we had a specific area to add it to. And
Is that accurate that we can't do anything outside of docketing?
I mean, I think we, we could ostensibly make some recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. Usually we try and stay within the scope of the docketed items.
Mm-hmm.
Or we may even be compelled to do so. Um, but are there other, so would there be other places you could address that land use? Or is it just?
It's more that there, because it exists, there's a whole separate chapter that just addresses those uses and there's a lot of history around when that chapter was adopted and a lot of engagement that went into that chapter. Um, that it would be hard to just add one use to agritourism that did not relate at all to this other chapter or require updates to that chapter.
I, I think that, um, we're probably getting a little farther outside of the scope of public comment at this point, but Mr. Merriman, if you could articulate a very specific ask and forward it to Ashley, she can bring it back to the planning commission as an agenda item to discuss a little bit further and we could probably give it, you know, ten minutes on an agenda in the future to really fine tune any kind of recommendation that we'd want to make.
Commissioners withheld their, what you guys put up because Gary Edwards specifically said he wants clarification on this before they do anything.
I, I think that we're not prepared to take this issue any farther here today, but it's something that we should look at.
I can, I have, um, during staff update, if you want to revisit it, I've got, I've got the transcript, like, you know, that, that we could review as well as the recommendation letter with the planning commission because he's correct, the, the commissioners, um, did ask, well, I think you offered that you were gonna
Be here tonight.
Be here tonight. Um, and and they do have a work session coming up next week. Um, and this is just a point of clarification.
Did you have more, Derek?
No, I'm trying to, just trying to think how we might clarify it.
Well, I mean, I can read, I can read what the motions were. I mean, so, so Maya, because this was brought up yesterday, Maya went and listened to the audio and wrote it out. And then I've got the recommendation letter because it, it was in your recommendation letter that went to the board.
Okay.
Okay, let's, let's revisit that during staff updates then. Uh, thank you very much.
Oh, I was gonna say, your recommendation just says to look at it as a whole. It doesn't specifically like I asked agritours and agriculture.
Okay, so okay, we'll make, make note of that. Thank you. No, thank you very much. Thanks for coming in and bringing that up. Is there anybody else in the audience that I'd like to address the planning commission?
Yeah, actually. My name is Matt Huff. And my concerns are pretty much in line with, with Jeff's as well, adding cannabis to, to agro, um, to ag language and recognizing it as a plant in the ag language. Um, but more specifically, my situation. Um, I'm a stay-at-home dad, but I'm also a cannabis producer and processor licensee in the, in the state. And I'm in Thurston County. And I have a particular piece of family land that I'm interested in moving my license to. And the particular piece, the parcel is thirty-seven acres. But the way that the zoning is set up for rural residential resource in that area, I can't have any cannabis license there unless I'm forty acres or more. So this is a matter of three acres and so my, my question is what is the three acres doing that the thirty-seven isn't doing in terms of having a farm there that can grow cannabis?
For the record, could you identify yourself and tell us what area of the county you're from?
Yes, my name is Matt Huff and I'm from Thurston County.
Thank you very much. Do you have anything else?
That's all.
I didn't like that. Yeah. Anybody else want to? Well, with that, we'll move on to the next portion of our agenda, which is the elections for the twenty twenty four planning commission season. And I don't know, um, exactly how we want to do this yet, other than kind of talk about what we have expected for leadership of the planning commission coming up for twenty twenty four. If we want to take some nominations. And then the idea is we'll take nominations this meeting and at the next meeting, we would take an election. And then does the election, would that chair then take over from that point or at the meeting after that?
No, I think we could take over at that. I mean, we, we can verify, but I think.
It's Robert Ruhl's minute they're elected.
The moment they're elected. Please, please, uh.
I would, we probably will come up with the exact same answer either way, but I think it would be considerate since I think there are going to be some new planning commissioners added by our next meeting that we table this and move it to our next meeting.
Well, I think we can take nominations now and then also take nominations on the floor of the election.
Okay.
Um, but if you feel strongly about this.
And if that's worth something, uh, either way, I'm good.
Sounds like the chair might want to be out of the chair. He's really.
No. Uh, does anybody else have anything on this then or have a preference one way or the other on when we start taking nominations?
Um, I would say, I mean, I understand Kevin's point, but I, I think we could also just, I think we could, we have a quorum. We could do elections tonight.
We, I don't think we could take elections. Are we allowed to take, do elections the same night that we take nominations?
Sure.
That's the way, I mean, the way we did it last, last year.
Yeah.
Was that way. The way we've done it before that was we had a couple of people pull the committee or pull up commission and they brought nominations one night and we did the election at the same time.
Is our core rule when we don't have planning commissioners seated, still, it would be five no matter what to win an election, wouldn't it?
Yeah, there, there's eight of us, right?
So the first thing we'd have to do is get through. First, we'd have to get through nominations and then we'd have to see if, uh, anybody made a motion to forward the election.
So now that we're having this debate, I'll just go ahead and move to table to the next meeting.
It's been moved to tables. There a second? Been moved and seconded to table this until the next meeting. We call for the vote. Or is there any discussion?
I'll just say, ask someone who's near here. I think that that's a considering options.
Uh, I'd call for the vote.
I'm so sorry. I'm used to Tasha doing that. Commissioner Pestinger. Commissioner Nelson.
Hi.
Chair Casino.
Hi.
Vice Chair Day.
Hi.
Commissioner Hanson.
Hi.
Commissioner Bombarber.
Hi.
And Commissioner Kaiser.
Hi.
All right, the, this discussion is being tabled until next meeting where we will take nominations and hold our election. All right. Thank you very much. We'll move on to our next item on our agenda, which is a planning commission training session with our, uh, staff, Amelia Schwartz and Andrew Bond.
I don't mind just giving a little intro. So this is something new we're trying. Um, now that we have some, some new commissioners joining us, um, we may have a lot of exciting, um, projects coming up. Um, might be a little bit different than what this planning commission has reviewed in the past. We'll see the comp plan update. We thought it'd just be helpful to sort of walk through the role of the planning commission and these new binders you have and whatnot. Um, and I will say that this is a work in progress and so we also welcome feedback on how we could, you know, make changes to this moving forward so that it's as useful as possible to you all. Turn it over.
All right, welcome and welcome back to the planning commission. It says twenty twenty-three on it. Already off to a good start. I made it in twenty twenty-three. All right. Uh, I'm Amelia Schwartz, associate planner. Uh, I apologize for my voice. I'm getting over the flu. Um, so today's presentation, we're going to have an introduction to the planning commission or a refresh to the planning commission. And we're going to go over how to use the new PC binder. Some background, this is a ten-person commission made up of volunteers. It meets on the first and third Wednesday of each month at six thirty PM. The planning commission reviews land use and environmental policies as assigned by the Board of County Commissioners. It provides recommendations on docketed items to the Board of County Commissioners. I'll let Andrew take over for a bit.
I'm going to do the heavy text slides. Um, so the point, uh, the rules of the commissioners are to listen and solicit public input on land use matters that you typically hear, see through rezonings. Um, and represent and interpret community needs and opinions. Uh, prepare for matiting. I've this day, prepare for meetings by reviewing the agenda and other documents to be discussed, which now will be included within your binders. Uh, listen to staff analysis and public input to draft advisory recommendation to the board. Reflect the consensus of the majority of the members. Request additional information or suggest changes collectively rather than individually. Bring any relevant questions or ideas to work sessions and to provide recommendations to staff, uh, but not direct staff on duties. So this is the general process of a docketed item. The first part is we receive it through a proposal and that's brought to the Board of County Commissioners for consideration on the docket. If the project is added to the docket, either the development code docket or the comprehensive plan docket, it's then assigned to a staff when staffing is available and that's when we really kickstart the work. So we will engage with the community, draft documents, and then we move right into the planning commission. And with that, we listen to the public through public comment as well as receive a recommendation from the planning commission that we end up taking to the board for their final review and their final consideration. And so our successes are great. This, uh, past year, we completed quite a few projects. Quite a few, uh, joint plans, the wireless code, finally, Grand Mount, the ag CIO, the code clarifications and correctional corrections, the forest land conversions, uh, at least through the planning commission, the long-term ag zoning, which is through the planning commission and the capital improvement program, uh, plan, which is a reoccurring item, which we will see next year or this year. So this is the preliminary schedule for twenty twenty-four. Right now, we're in the onboarding stage and soon we'll be getting into the preview of the Nusqually sub-area plan as well as the joint code updates as well as the comprehensive plan chapters. There are quite a few and there can be a lot of work sessions on that. Through the summer, we will be reviewing those chapters as well as any citizen initiated rezones that we have time to fit into the schedule. Into the fall, we will continue to review the comprehensive plan chapters as well as the sub-area joint plan codes as well as potentially holding the public hearing. Um, and then any outstanding work, the comprehensive plan will be going into the winter and continuing education.
Yeah, and just a note on the continuing education piece, um, this last winter, November, December, when there was, you know, there wasn't a specific items for the planning commission to consider. Uh, we brought in representatives from the state agencies to do deeper dives on, on topics. And so throughout this year, like think about, um, areas where you might want to learn more and then trying to reserve some time in that November, December. Um, timeframe to bring in, bring in folks, um, to just help, help get, um, oh, a stronger foundation for the work, work ahead in twenty twenty-five.
Not, not to interrupt, but do you have a specific date in mind where you want us to be able to have taken a vote on the comp plan by?
November.
November.
That is, that's how we get to reserve December for deeper dives, um, working backwards. Um, it's really.
So we really want to get comp plan done twenty twenty-four.
If we're going to meet the deadlines that the state has, has established, yes, and we can dive deeper into that. Um, but yes.
That's June twenty twenty-five that it has to be done at the.
But it still has to go through the board. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Right.
So you start working backwards from June twenty twenty-five. We need subs, like, yeah, we need a substantial amount of that comp plan to sort of.
I guess what I was getting at is if, if you're thinking that we would be able to invite some outside guests again, maybe from the state, from commerce or something like that, it would sure be handy to have them before we had to take our vote on comp plan.
If there are areas, oh, I mean, through the comp plan for sure. It was more using December to the, if there is work ahead in twenty twenty-five, set, setting up for that. But yes. Um, Laura would love to come back. She really enjoyed meeting you all. So she said, if ever wanted to come back, she's happy to be a resource.
That'd be great.
Oh, and sorry, for our new commissioners, Laura Hudson is, um, a, someone who works for the Department of Commerce that specifically focuses on housing and more specifically, a house bill twelve twenty. And yeah, she just provided a wonderful overview.
I was, I looked at the slides.
Sorry.
All right, so each member should have marked a special location on the county map when you came in. I'm sorry, Commissioner Kaiser. Um, I'll give you a little bit of background. Um, so each commissioner that's in person came in and marked a special location in Thurston County on the map. So if you could just have one in mind, Commissioner Kaiser. Um, so we'll go through one commissioner at a time. And if you could introduce yourself, tell us the reason for joining the commission. And if you could share a quick story about what the location you marked or had in mind that means to you. Um, and we can start in person, so Commissioner Kaiser can have some time to catch up. Um, if we want to start with Commissioner Passenger.
All right.
Or not, or not, you guys can also just.
No, that's fine. I'm ready. I just, uh, how long do we have to spend on this?
Um, if you could just keep it under like three minutes or so.
Three minutes, okay. So, uh, I moved, I, I grew up here in Washington, born and raised in Washington and uh, lived in different parts of the state and, uh, after college, lived all over the world and lived in California for fifteen years, got married and whatnot. And worked in the software industry. And worked in the software industry and. My wife actually died rather suddenly from pneumonia, just within two weeks, just totally unexpectedly and very shockingly and. Uh, that was about a little over ten years ago and. So I continued to live in California for a couple of years, uh, for a year or so after her death and. Uh, it really, all of my family still live here, I have family that lives in South Bay Road, family that lives in. Uh, right by Orla, Papa Boulevard, family that lives over off of Yelm Highway and College Street and Lacey and my dad. Family live out in, uh, Ording, out in Pierce County. And so I found myself coming up here to visit a lot and coming back and, and, um. For me, part of the just healing process of all of that, uh, was being here in Washington and getting out in nature, going out to the Olympic Peninsula, going on different trips. Up Mount Rainier and hiking the mountains and different things, going out in the rainforest, et cetera, and I just. Decided I need to come back, uh, I've spent more time traveling and kind of back to Thurston County and back to Washington than I am in California and. Uh, I just, even though I had a lot of friends there, I decided it would be best for me to come here and it's been fantastic and when I first got here, um. I really got connected a lot with the shoreline, I've marked a spot there, uh, near Derek's house. Uh, and, uh, one of his places. And, uh, it's just a beautiful spot along the water there, uh, which I've gone out, uh, in boats and enjoyed in different ways and. Um, I think it's amazing the way the, you know, the ocean and the sea here, South Sound and all that comes and meets the land. And the forests and the rivers and everything and one of the most beautiful things about Washington and I've rented boats and gone out and. Gone all along the shorelines, trying to learn about what the heck we're talking about in these, uh, planning meetings about shoreline bunkering and whatnot. Uh, I've gone and I had a friend who took me out off of Steamboat Island and for those of you that don't know, on the northeast corner of Steamboat Island. Um, at low tide on like certain, only happens a couple of days of each few months, there's a really, really ultra-low tide. And there's a cliff that's like five or hundred or thousand feet straight down, you can walk out onto it, the water gets low enough where. You can go out onto it and, uh, look right down off the edge in the water and see starfish and amazing other. Uh, incredible wildlife just growing right up the side of this thing. And I, I've seen videos, I've watched a lot of YouTube videos about like gray whales and other amazing things just popping up. In just off of Steamboat Island, watching the water rush through there when there's, uh. Currents are changing or whatnot, the tide's going in and out, it's just insane how strong the currents are there. But, uh, all of that, the waterfront and the land is just amazing to me, it's beautiful, it's healing. And, uh, I moved back here for that and I really appreciate all of Thurston County, but especially that. And that's why I wanted to be part of the planning commission to help. Keep that that way for the long term. Or even restore it where possible.
Well, my name is Scott Nelson and the spot I marked on the map is my family's farm. Most of you know my story, but I'm a fifth generation farmer in Thurston County. My family's farm was settled in eighteen sixty-one. And has been in the family ever since. I grew up South County, went to Tyno High School. Went to WSU for a while, decided that wasn't a really good choice for me, so started working. I've worked on farms from. Moscow Idaho to Olympia, Washington and all over. Um, I got involved. About two thousand and five, I think, I started going to planning commission meetings when the Colonel Arias was up for review. And didn't even really plan on it, but there was an opening. And a couple of the planning commissioners asked me to apply. And so I've been here ever since.
Probably note that you're the longest-serving planning commissioner probably in history.
Not quite yet.
Yeah, that's where all the institutional knowledge is, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm Eric Casino, I'm, uh, uh, born and raised, I was born in St. Peter's, same with all three of my children. And, uh, the spot that I chose is the yellow dot on the, uh. Um, eastern edge, northeastern edge there, which is right in the middle of Nisqually, uh, I'm a trailer park kid, grew up. Kind of the funny story is I was dumb enough to think we were rich because we had a double wide. Everybody else had single wides, but, um. It was an interesting time growing up there, I still, my folks still live down there. Um, so I feel like I have a lot of connection to that area, but that whole Hawks Prairie area was my playground, uh, everywhere that is now tribal land up in, um. We used to call it herders, but it's where Cabela's is and all that kind of stuff, that's where we all rode our motorcycles and, um, were regular hooligans. I did go to school, moved away for professional reasons for a while and came back and did have my family and all that kind of stuff here. And, uh, I now live on the northwest shore of Long Lake and even before I bought my house on Long Lake. I've always had kind of an interest in water, I've, I've, uh, my community service for the county started with the Surfers and Stormwater Advisory Board. And then I was involved in some lake management stuff and then the planning commission and, and my two. My biggest focus has always been clean water initiatives, I think clean water has always been a pretty important thing to me. But to kind of. Balance that with the needs of our most important species here in Thurston County, which is humans. Um, I, and growing up dirt poor and seeing how dirt poor people live. The need to balance our clean water with the ability for people to actually live somewhere is pretty important to me. So that kind of pushed me from surface and stormwater over towards the planning commission side and as such, I've been able to. Hopefully have a little bit of influence over shoreline master program, conservation futures is a very important program to me and I think the county has done fantastic things with it by incorporating it into the habitat conservation program. And, uh, um. While I love all the county, Nisqually is kind of, well. I don't know if I'll ever leave Nisqually, it's all, it's gonna be part of me forever, so that's where I'm at.
Thanks, uh, again, Derek Day and, uh, sorry, I didn't do the assignment, but if I were, um, Kevin may have stolen mine, so I'm gonna pick another one and I would put one right at Medicine Creek. Um, for. The reason that that's where some of the tribes between the US government or the treaties between the US government and the area tribes were signed. And, uh, I got into land use because I care about salmon. And, um, I think that those, those treaties that were signed there, uh, while there is a lot of pain associated with those, those are probably one of the last best things we have to actually protect salmon. The tribes not only have a right to harvest fish, but they have a right to habitat so that the, that we can actually sustain those fish populations. But I got into land use, like I said, because I, I thought when, uh, Commissioner Casino said most important species, he was gonna say salmon.
Uh, maybe the second most important.
Right. But that's, that's really why I got into land use planning, that's why I care about it, um, in my, my day-to-day work, I do stormwater work. And, um, I talked about the fact that, you know, every stormwater problem we have is the result of some bad land use decision somewhere else. Um, that engineers are left to clean up, uh, but it's really, you know, it's salmon, it's the ability for tribes to be able to harvest fish. Um, I used to work for a tribal consortium, do harvest management work right out of school, um, ironically with a Bachelor of Arts degree. Um, but, uh, that's really why I'm here and what I think is really important about land use planning. Is fish, the people who they're important to and the environment that supports them.
Thank you.
If I can add, Commissioner Day's sister once told me. Derek loves everything about fishing and being outdoors and he has. Since growing up, set up his entire life around doing that as much as humanly possible. His job, his volunteer work is everything.
Sure.
Joel Hanson, I, uh, also was born at St. Peter's Hospital and my son was born at St. Peter's Hospital as well. I grew up, um, in southeast Olympia, really close to Olympia High School, the dot I put on the map is at Watershed Park, it's the green one kind of. In the middle, um. And that was, that was a big. Place that my dad and I went every weekend, it seemed like, and, and often during the week, we spent a lot of time there because we could just walk from our house. Down to Watershed Park and I remember him teaching me the names of plants when I was probably in kindergarten. And, uh, showing me how to pick the licorice fern and chew the root and all, all those things. Um, and so growing up in that area, I spent a lot of time in Watershed Park, um. And it's interesting how it relates to this, uh, second part of the question, how I, um. My reason for joining the planning commission because, um, my path in service. This type of service, I guess, started, um, on the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee for the City of Olympia. Um, when I was appointed by Mayor Buckstall. I don't even know how long ago that was, but, um. Part of the interview process was. He wanted to know about my connection to Parks and Olympia and I told him about my dad and I going to Watershed Park and. How we were there all the time and, you know, I just wanted every kid that grew up here to have a park. That they could walk to from their house and that they could experience those kinds of things. Um, and that led to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee for the City of Olympia and then that led to volunteering at the Conservation District. And then that led to, um, when I was, when my current home was annexed into the city of Tumwater. I was approached to join the planning commission for the city of Tumwater, did that for six years. Um, and then, uh, was asked to join this body. And so here I am.
Thank you.
Uh, my name's Daniel Baumbacher, um. I am not native to Washington, I was born and raised in rural central Pennsylvania, um, I can relate to you, my, my, uh, uncle now. Uh, works on a fourth generation farm and an orchard, uh, it's where I spent a lot of my summers, uh. When I first moved out here in twenty eleven, the first place I went was Burfoot Park. And I remember walking down to the shoreline and it was a clear day and I could see the cascades in the distance and the water was clean and I could see like. Living things and it was such a different experience than what I'd had growing up, I grew up in, uh, areas of the country that were strip mined for coal in the, uh, early, uh. For the late and early, late eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds and the closest body water to me is called the Red Machanan, which. It was bright red, smelled strongly of sulfur, nothing could live in it because it was destroyed by. Poor land management practices, um, and just the contrast of that coming out here and experiencing that and. Seeing how vibrant and thinking how lucky I was to live in a place like this and then over time I realized it's not just luck, it's also good planning, so. Um, it's one of the reasons why I thought it would be fun to. And meaningful for me to join this body.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Yeah, go ahead.
Since I put one up, far left, the dark blue and I think I. I picked that because there's a, a Grange Hall there and a driving range right next to it. And for five years, my band and another, some other musicians in town, I played bluegrass music, banjo and we put a music festival on at that property. Also had many music nights in the Grange Hall and just a lot of fond memories playing music with community and friends and the Steamboat Island community is really a lot of artists in that area, um. Always great turnout for, for music and art events, so that's just a, a, a spot in the county with very fond memories for me.
Thank you.
And it's in District Three.
Commissioner Kaiser, do you mind sharing?
Well, I'm a perfect segue after what Commissioner Mensor had to say, um, here in the beautiful District Three. Uh, you go a little bit north. Of where Ty put his mark, you will find a place called Cougar Point and it's a big knob that kind of juts. Into Totten Inlet and that's where I live and that's where I'm talking to you from tonight and that's the backdrop behind me as well. And it's an amazing place, Totten Inlet, it is a very clean part of the very south part of Puget Sound. It hosts, uh, tremendous fishery. A chum fishery that's been going wild for thousands and thousands of years that comes. All the way down from Alaska, all the way down the sound, all the way down Totten Inlet. And ends up going up Kennedy Creek right on the county line with Mason County. And when I first saw this spot, I was like amazed, like wow, you could live here and you can. Send your kids to a good public school and you might be able to find a job. I had been serving as an American diplomat, working overseas for about twenty-five years. I'm a fifth generation Washingtonian, it was time to come home. And my family's originally from Lewis County, but I was just like, I don't know. So we started looking around and I just totally fell in love with this area and, um, it's, it's been absolutely wonderful, we moved here in twenty eleven. And I've been fortunate enough to, uh, serve at the Department of Natural Resources. We're, I'm currently working at the Evergreen State College as a, uh, Government Relations Director, working with the legislature. I'm very proud to serve also as Vice President of the Board of the Capital Land Trust. And our mission there at the land trust is really about conservation. Of working lands, working forests, that includes farmlands, agricultural lands, but also land of really, um. Kind of untrammelled natural conservation value. And so when the opportunity came to serve on this board, thank you Commissioner Mensor. I thought, wow, what a great opportunity and so I'm so delighted to meet you all and I'm looking forward to visiting with you in person in our next meeting.
Thank you, thank you all for sharing that, I think it's really important to know. What everyone's here for and that's because everyone loves Thurston County, there's a reason we're here, there's a reason why we show up. It's also, uh, a nice thought experiment to look at the places that aren't marked on the map. Um, to see where maybe we're missing out on truly getting involved in our county. Alright, so now we're gonna talk a little bit about the staff. We're not gonna share our personal stories today, but. Um, some of us haven't had dinner yet, so we'll keep it kind of short. Um, so at the top kind of of the, the hierarchy of the counties, the Board of County Commissioners. And we're very lucky to have one of them type into here tonight. Um, following that is Joshua Cummings, he's the Director of CPED, which stands for Community Planning and Economic Development. And then after that, we've got Ashley O'Rey, our Planning Manager, who's here with us tonight. And then the community planning. Long-range services are split into two and a half major groups. And that is growth management services, uh, conservation services, and we have agriculture and education outreach. For growth management services, we have Maya Teeple, who's the Senior Planner. Um, working with Maya, our Andrew Bond, Associate Planner, Leah Davis, Associate Planner. Amelia Schwartz, myself, um, and Anna Rodriguez, Associate Planner.
I'm sorry, do you, do you mind sharing where Maya will be for the next three or four months?
Is that a little too personal?
She, she, she is shared, um. Yeah, well, for, yeah, commissioners, she'll be out on maternity leave.
She'll be back eventually and in the meantime, Andrew Bond will be our interim senior planner. Help and direct us through the comp plan. Um, then Andrew Defobis is the Senior Planner with Conservation Services and with Andrew are Marissa Wissman. Dana Bowers and Brian Benjamin, all Associate Planners as well. Kevin Jensen is our newest, uh, addition to the team, he'll be the Agricultural Planning Manager. Um, so hopefully you guys will get to meet him soon. Then Miriam Velazian is our Education and Outreach Specialist, so this is the team. Trying to get all the long-range planning projects ready to go.
Kevin Jensen of Riverbend Ranch?
It is.
We figured someone who does agriculture for the agriculture.
Good idea.
Bureaucrats are known by their predecessor, so he's the new Ashley.
Yeah, the new.
Yeah, and I can give more information during the staff page about that role.
Alright, and then something that those of you in person see in front of you today is the binder. This is a new resource for the commissioners, we're hoping will be helpful. Um, you'll be able to reference the binder for basics on the planning commission, making motions, commission rules. Comprehensive plan chapters, the existing ones, not the newest ones just yet, more. Um, the binders can be stored at the county or commissioners can take them home if they would like. Um, but the binder resources are available online to the public, to you on the planning commission website at any time. Um, so any members of the public who want to know more about the binder, about the planning commission, you know. What do Robert's rules mean, how does this actually work, it'll be online. It is online. So just a brief rundown of the binder contents. So just a brief rundown of the binder contents. We'll try to keep it updated with meeting minutes and materials. And then the permanent stuff will be the introduction to the Planning Commission packet. A rundown of rules of procedure. The Citizen Advisory Board's Handbook, Robert's Rules of Order. It's just a cheat sheet, a Planning Documents Guide. So if you're trying to look at what documents already exist, what programs and plans, that one has kind of the, the heavy hitters listed in. And who made them where you can print them.
And we can thank Commissioner Wheatley for that suggestion.
And then the Comprehensive Plan Chapters as they are now. So hopefully that's something that will get well-loved and well-used. So, thank you on behalf of the CPED staff. I hope that helps refresh and reintroduce and introduce.
Go ahead, Commissioner Pressinger.
Uh, thank you for this. Thank you for this resource. I think it's super valuable and helpful and well-put-together. I have been very impressed with MRSC resources. Gone through their website and watched videos and looked at documents and training stuff and whatnot. It seems to me, and I know that's at least referencing here. But is there any way for newer Commissioners especially? Staff could possibly look at MRSC and pick out maybe a few of the best things that would be worth either. Maybe some documents from MRSC in here and maybe some links or some reference to which videos from training especially wise. For new planning Commissioners would be the most valuable.
Yeah, we've got some in the introductory packet.
Yeah, if there are others, we can, we can definitely, if you've seen some good ones that you think are. Good suggestions, because I know when I'm reviewing it, I'm reviewing it from a staff perspective. Yeah, I think it would be nice to add that and we can add it to the resources sheet. Does everyone know what MRSC is?
Do you need, I, I'm sure from our newer Commissioners, you'll need some OPMA certificates. But do you need new OPMA certificates from the rest of the Commission on any kind of interval?
I'd have to verify that. I know that that is something that we're asking in the appointment letters to the new Commissioners, but let me follow up and just verify for. Reappointed Commissioners, if that's necessary.
Maybe just for anyone that's watching online or the public, MRSC is a municipal research service center.
So I guess I'll make a suggestion since we have a County Commissioner here. I don't know what the process has been recently, but I know, I mean, obviously I was helped. I had been going to Planning Commission meetings for six months before I became a Planning Commissioner, so I'd seen what was going on. But even at that point, I was required, after I was appointed, before I could attend a meeting. I was required to go through an onboarding with staff where they kind of ran me through. You know, what the Planning Commission does, you know, how, how things are run. And I think that's a really helpful position, because we're kind of in one of those spots where. Yeah, we make recommendations and everything we do has some sort of sideboard. Sometimes it's, you know, pretty much, you know, maybe we're just reviewing some part of the, of a document and it's. You know, just go forth and change that how you make a recommendation to change that how you see fit. Sometimes it's. More narrow and I think that's sometimes where we as a planning commission get lost. Is sometimes we, and I mean, sometimes we make a recommendation that says, here's our recommendation on what you guys sent us. But you should also look at this. And I just think that, that was our meeting with the head of the Planning Department at the time. And it was.
Do that anymore?
That, this is the first time I've heard of it. I think it's a great idea. I mean, our attempt to even put this together was a shift from what I've at least been able to see and. In my relatively short tenure here.
No, I got straight into the deep end. I got straight in the deep end. They did this at TRPC, what Scott's describing.
Yeah, I would.
I did it with Chris Chappell.
I'd be very happy to do that.
Four at once, you know, if you can wait for those two. You can bring them all in and be efficient. I think you just have time to cover that stuff with everybody.
Yeah, so when, so maybe next month, Commissioner Kaiser and Commissioner Mager and anyone who, you know. Just wants to hang out with us. I think it's also helpful to hear from a planning commissioner that's been on the planning commission, what your perspective is.
You can have five there, but not six.
Well, you can have, it would just be a meeting.
We can figure that out.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Um, slide number five, the planning process. This is pretty useful, but. I wonder, the first thing that came to my mind is references in here to. Public process under docket review and adoption and then. Under Planning Commission, Planning Commissioners' public comment and then. Board review, the item moves to B O C C for additional public review. I think it would be useful for us, but it would definitely be useful for the public to get greater clarity. On how the public communication input works and where are the appropriate times to talk to whom. We get lots of people coming in here when something's already gone past us. And it's up to the board and they don't know that it doesn't do them any good to tell us about it. They should go tell the Board of County Commissioners. We get people that come in here who want to make comment after we've already had a public hearing. So the difference between a general open public comments that are just random in general versus a specific public hearing. When that begins and ends and how that cuts off, public comment for this body when that's finished. Would be, I think, useful tied in with this particular process.
I think that sounds, that sounds great and I think actually Miriam is working on that. Miriam Viasian, who is referenced as our Education Outreach Specialist. Some of the feedback she got doing all of her Thurston twenty forty-five outreach this past summer was. Folks that were just interested in how to engage on a whole range of topics. So I know that that's at the top of her list to try to develop some of those resources for folks in the county. I'm just, oh, no, sorry.
Go ahead.
I, no, I was just wondering if the planning Commissioners who have been here with us for a few years. Have any words of wisdom they would like to share. I mean, we put together a paper and a binder, but sort of your, your real life. Experiences being a planning commissioner.
Can I just quickly make a comment to follow up on what Commissioner Pressinger said? I, I think that, that the county does this public comment thing pretty well. And, and, and provides some consistency about how, you know, we can always. Educate people to a greater degree and I think that's good and work that we should do. But we're consistent and, and there's a process and I, I think that's helpful. I also serve at the Port of Olympia and they're wrestling with. How to, how to take public comment because their process has changed and it's been at the whim of who knows what and. Often they're taking public comment after a decision has been made and. So I would say that, that, you know, the, what you're doing is, is really working, I think. And, and it's something that, you know, maybe other, other entities could, could look to.
Don't move in the direction of the port, please.
Hey, but it's a new day at the port, so we're, we're anticipating great things.
We follow up on my question about words of wisdom. You don't have to share any. Or any Commissioners.
I mean, I don't really know. I think, I mean, one thing for me has always been. Watching what the state's doing because every year they change what we're doing. And I think a big one for me, and I think it's part of the reason that I got onto it. Was look at the goals of growth management. Because that's kind of what we're guided by and the big reason I got on was because. I felt that the natural resource goal would be. I don't even want to say ignored, but I think, I mean, I brought, I kind of brought this up at the Commissioners meeting yesterday. When you have five, ten, fifteen, twenty people in a room. You know, talking about agriculture, but nobody has any real life experience. It's hard to, it's hard to get it right and do right by agriculture. And so I think that's, to me, that's the biggest thing is, especially when, you know. When we're talking about forestry, you know, I've, my family has forests, but you know, we've always worked with a forester. I don't know a lot of, I know the basics. I don't know the ins and outs, so I turn to. Joel, sorry, I dropped right there. And in other things, we've had other people that have expertise and. You know, sometimes, I mean, I'll admit it with me, it's, it creates sometimes somewhat of a bias. But, you know. I guess if you agree with me on something, that's great. If you don't agree with me, that's okay because we all have disagreements. But, and then it's gonna be up to each of us to decide, you know, where, you know, if I'm coming at something. From a position that somebody doesn't like, you know, kind of put yourself in the position of, okay, how much of this is. Him coming at it this way from his personal experience or how, you know, sometimes it's trying to get to a certain place. And I think for the most part, everybody does a pretty good job in this group. The one thing, I guess, I would say the one thing I would like to see, I think Commissioner Mensah brought up consensus. For a long time, almost everything we did was consensus. We, I mean, and I can tell you, being in the Planning Commission for as long as I have been. We probably had, if not last year, the last two years, we've had more divided votes and more minority opinions. Than the entire rest of my term in the Planning Commission. And that's just something that I've always worked for is to, you know, I've, I've, I'll say, I voted for a lot of stuff that. Wasn't necessarily what I wanted, but to me it was. The position that the Planning Commission was as close as I could get them to what I wanted. And I only did, I mean, I, I don't remember, I think I did one, maybe two minority reports. And that was just, that was mostly because there was one major sticking point where I just could not get behind. You know, and even like we discussed yesterday, our vote on long-term ag. Was a five to two vote. And it, somebody, I don't remember if it was which Commissioner it was, but asked, you know, well. Cause they, the staff split it up. So yesterday's hearing was just our code amendments. And so I, I stood up and I said, you know, had we voted on just the code amendments, my no vote would have been a yes vote.
I think I have to take responsibility for a lot of what happened in the last two years and why we have a lot of. Split votes and a lot of minority reports and that kind of thing. And I think that that was. Well, I know for, for a fact that I did that on purpose. I saw that our docket, our work plan was really deep. And I saw that we had a comprehensive plan coming up that needed our full attention and the idea of getting. Our docket knocked down and getting a lot of these projects done was pretty important to me. And if that meant, that did mean that we had some compromises, we did not have as much consensus as we wanted. That calculation was okay with me because I understood that we're an advisory body. We are not the final decision makers on these things. And if we did send the board just a consensus, then they weren't here in everything anyways. So a minority report and, or a dissenting opinion of some sort or another. Is probably still useful information to the board. And I know that personally, I felt like I lost a whole lot more votes than I wanted to, but that's the way that goes and. But overall, I think that the work that we did over the last two years was really good and I would like to see that. I hope that it continues. I hope that. I hope that comp plan goes as well as the last two years have gone. I, I think that it's a big lift. There's a lot going on there. There's a lot to do and I would. I, I don't think that the, the details are important, but if we lose the forest for the trees, that's gonna be a loss for everybody. So. I guess my words of advice here are, don't get hurt feelings if things don't go your way. But don't be afraid to say something either and I hope everybody has felt like they could say what they needed to say, but. You don't get consensus, I think that's alright too. We can try to work for, towards more consensus, especially if we do have the time. But thankfully, I'm not gonna be the one that's shepherding that through and I'm not gonna be cracking the whip. So whoever is the unfortunate soul that's gonna take on that job, good luck. Please.
So I've, uh, two and a half years ago, I was brand new to this body and now I'm the third. Most tenured member of this body. I also want to comment on this topic of consensus. I think I'm gonna disagree with Chair Casino. I don't think it was his fault. I think that A, this group became more diverse in perspectives.
For sure.
And I think that's a positive thing. And in fact, I'm still right now actively disappointed that we're one female in this entire group right now. That's a disappointment to me. And I wish that we were more representative of our community. But I think that Commissioner, Casino, Chair Casino. And others, I, I heard this often out of Commissioner Halverson and often out of Commissioner Day. They would make comments like, hey, it seems that we agree on this, this and this. And we might sometimes take a straw vote and be divided right down the middle. But they would point out the areas where we had agreement or where we had some consensus and say, let's work around that. Let's focus on that. Let's move forward from that. Can we agree on this, this and this? And then what can we add to that? What else can we make some decisions on? And I think that was really valuable towards moving us towards consensus. I think it's totally appropriate for us to not have consensus all the time and for us to have differing opinions and be divided and have minority reports and. If that's reflective of each of our respective views. But I think it's also valuable for us to try to move towards consensus. Believe it or not. Former Commissioner Wheatley was on a long time, more than twenty years, the Hanford Nuclear Advisory Board. With had, which had over thirty-five members, including representatives from all over the state of Washington and all over from the federal government. And they could only make decisions with thirty-five plus members on full consensus. They couldn't do anything if they didn't get consensus of everyone. And they managed to figure out things that they could agree upon and find ways to move forward on, on things. And I agree that that's the most valuable thing we can do is, is. Move ourselves to understanding each other's views, listening and thinking about them. And paying attention to all of the public comment and all of each other's comments. And so I encourage us to continue to follow Chair Casino and Commissioner Day, Commissioner Halverson's examples of finding that consensus.
Just real quick on that point, I just want to be clarified. I don't think what I said about consensus is inconsistent with what you guys were saying, but. What I did say was just my personal opinion and I wasn't speaking, I don't know what the other Commissioners would say about that. I was just giving you my philosophical two cents about that, but. Just my two cents, but I think what you guys are saying is on, is right on.
On that topic, I would just say I've been on committees where consensus came to easy. Because I think people weren't as engaged as, as we are. And the result is that you get decisions that are largely made by staff. And, and nothing against the staff, but that's not the way that we set these things up to operate. And, and I think it does a disservice to the public when, when, when consensus just comes because people are like, wow, that sounds good to me. And, and so I'm really proud of the work that, that we're doing and, and I think it's, it is helpful information. I would think to the decision makers when, when there is a minority report that has got some points that are, that are deeply held.
I guess I'd just finish this up by saying that one of the reasons why I think that. This. Commission over the last couple of years has been more effective than the commission of like the twenty teens, twenty teens. Is because there are. Like you said, differing viewpoints, but also. The commissioners are much more well-read. Um, it was not, it was very frustrating for me to show up as a spectator at a planning commission meeting. In twenty eighteen and seeing planning commissioners open their packet for the first time at the beginning of the meeting, I'm just thinking, why are you here? I'm glad that never happened in the last couple of years here now, I'm glad that everybody is still really well-read, and I hope that everybody can continue, it's, it's a, it's a big ask, I mean, especially with this comp plan coming on. We're gonna be reading hundreds and hundreds. Thousands of pages of documents to try to get through all of this and try to make informed decisions and. And uh, while we do appreciate staff, we do have to make some pretty big decisions on our own, so. Um, I'm glad everybody can, I hope everybody can continue to do their reading.
It's gonna be more interesting than the wireless.
Wireless was, yeah, wireless was really in-depth and it was super long and there's tons of contention and I don't think there's a right answer for any of it. Yeah, it, it was all about who can you make the least mad? But everybody's gonna be a little mad, yeah.
And I think one thing I'm gonna add, because we're coming up on comp plan. Is I hope we all take it serious. And look forward to actually planning. Because so much of what we've done since I've been here. Has been responding to other things. You know, when I first came on, it was critical areas, and there was a. Growth management challenge to our zoning and. I mean. We have a witness here. Who remembers those days. Um, we spent a, I mean. I, I think I spent. My first three or four years, almost everything was either critical areas. Or zoning. And it wasn't us planning, it was us responding to a hearings board decision. And so. I mean, that's a big reason that I chose. To stay on this year is because I'm really looking forward to actually doing some planning.
Did you have any more, Ashley?
Oh, thank you, that's been really helpful.
Does anybody else have anything on, on this topic? Alright, well, we're gonna just continue to plow through our agenda then, so that brings us to our next item, which is. Staff updates to include, we'll save the cannabis part for the end of the rest of your staff updates.
Okay, yeah, if you wanna say that again, um. Thank you, the idols, do you wanna stay for docking, I wanna respect the fact that I don't think they had dinner, and she's been sick. But if you wanna stay there. Okay, um, so. Sounds like. Some of you are familiar with Kevin Jensen, um, our new agriculture program manager. He joined us January second, we're really excited, um, he, in addition to. Being a fourth generation rancher of Riverbend Ranch down south of Taino. He also has ten years of experience working at W S D A. Um, doing compliance on the pesticides. That's side side, he also served for ten years on our ag advisory committee. So he's an incredible resource, um, we're thrilled to have him on the team. Um, and you will probably see him soon, we're gonna make sure to get him before the planning commission, even if he doesn't have like a specific item that's gonna be before you. Um, but tying into that, um, and I heard conservation come up a lot as you were telling your stories. Um. The, we are, just issued the R F P for that working land conservation strategy, which I've been talking about, being very excited about. Um, so we're hoping to get a consultant team on board to start working on that, and that will include updates to the transfer development rights program. Purchase a development rights program, so those things will come through this group. I'm also excited to just. Bring bigger questions, when you talk about planning, it brings those bigger conservation planning questions to this group, because it's specifically focused on. How to conserve our working farm and forest lands, and this is a. A body that is more familiar with that than a lot of the other ones we have here, so. More to come, but I just want you to know that we are making progress on that front. Um, and hope to integrate pieces of it into the comp plan update as we move along. Um, another thing we just thought that um be good to cover as we move into docketing. Um, since the, the first briefing we're gonna have with the board on docketing is at the end of this month before our next planning commission meeting. Just wanted to give you a. Quick preview um of. New applications that have come in, what's on the preliminary docket, I know this, this group is really familiar with like what's on the official docket. But since this is a year where we're reopening it all. Um, that means everything on the preliminary docket is also gonna be up for consideration. So the sheets that we're handing out, they're, they're ones that are available on the website, sort of what our docket looks like, we just crossed out the ones that were completed. Um, and then. We added the one application um that we got for the comp and also. So I'll turn it over to Andrew, just to try to update on sort of what that timeline looks like and how the planning commission can engage if they wanna engage. Um, and this is also, this will hopefully be helpful for those members of the public joining us too. Um, cause it's an opportunity for them to. Comment, participate.
So I will start with the comprehensive plan uh dockets, within this docket sheet, you will see the projects that are first officially docked. As well as the proposals left on the preliminary docket, and then the last section, new proposals we received. We only received one proposal, so not much to add to that. Um, scrolling through, you'll notice that we have crossed out certain sections, the areas that we have crossed out have been completed. Some are partially crossed out, so Grand Mount in the joint area uh joint plans. Uh, the Grand Mount. Part of it was completed, we are going to be looking at how to resolve. The remaining rezoning pieces and the coming months with docket. As well as some of the smaller south, south community, uh, smaller south, uh, Thurston County. City joint plans that we need to knock out, so right near Taino and Bicota. You'll hear for, about the Nisqually Sub area plan here soon. Some of the rezonings that we still have on the docket, uh. You recoup the zone. Um. Will be coming up again for review of docketing as well as our holdings, because they have changed their proposal. They have to be redocked again, and since it's a refresh year, everyone gets looked at. Um, poke was completed with this past cycle. Some of the items on the preliminary. Uh, include the. Up Castle proposal, both the one that you, the planning commission reviewed and. Recommended denial as well as a subsequent application that was submitted. The Black Lake Quarry, uh, the Scott Street Rezone. Uh, Thurston twenty forty-five.
Hopefully that'll make it to the official pocket.
We hope, and then finally, the Port of Tacoma uh site-specific rezone. And then the newest application we received is a second, seven acre propos- uh, proposal changing from low density to commercial. Within the Lacey uh U G A.
And for those commissioners that were here for the Lacey joint plan public hearing, this is the one that Mr. Pettit. Um, discussed in his public hearing.
Trailer boss.
Yeah, it's like a currently split zoned, um, so tha- that is, you've had at least a, a preview of that one.
And Lacy's bringing that forward?
Mr. Pettit is, so it's a site-specific rezone application.
And then just jumping over to the developing for back it, there are a lot of cross-sense options in this one. Uh, which is pretty awesome, I think some of the big pieces that are still remaining are going to be the U G A code and zoning codes. So title twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. Uh, the forest land conversion piece is about to have a public hearing with the Board of County Commissioners. Um, the rural water availability and the T P R and P E R. Uh, are also still remaining. The natural landmark program is still on there, but we have completed pretty much everything else. There are quite a lot on the preliminary docket, um. Wide range of topics, no shooting zones, which don't necessarily fall within the purview, uh. Uh. G M S, but. C P A comment periods, and then we are looking to change how we originally approached the miscellaneous clerical errors. And looking at it, treating it as a code clarifications and corrections and kind of. Rebranding it and trying to capture more things within it.
And, and just so you're aware, um, for those new commissioners. Um, that a lot of those suggestions or ideas come directly from our building development. Development center, things that they're seeing through their permitting that like, oh boy, we have a reference to a table, it doesn't exist. Or it'd be really nice, we keep getting questions about what storage containers are allowed, can we clarify whether they're allowed? Um, so that, that's sort of what's in that bucket.
Yep. Yeah, question.
Yeah, um. I'm trying to understand, this thing is titled comprehensive planned amendment docket. And versus development code amendment docket and. We've previously looked at an agenda for the year around the comprehensive plan update. Which is all sorts of things like housing and health and et cetera, et cetera. But that's not in here. How is, how does that relate to this?
So the Thurston twenty forty-five item that's under the preliminary is essentially the overarching topic. Then, within that topic, we have very specific section, housing, land use, climate. Everything pretty much in that.
And, and we are gonna go into more detail to. We, we thought of this idea of updating, updating this and bringing it to you at about five thirty, and so that's why we used what we had from last year. But as we move into the, the board review process, all. The calling out of all those chapters um will be made.
And then there are some new proposals that we have yet to add to the preliminary, and there are. Quite a few others that we are still working through, we're in the process of developing. Um, our project sheets for each of these and kind of creating more consistent projects. Um, we are going to take a different approach with docking this year because we do have two new commissioners. And so generally how we've approached it in the past is that we do start out life. Have a public comment and shift into like the heavier side, which is more of the project specifics. But what we're gonna take is shifting it to a kind of explanation of what the docket is, how we get to where we are today. Um, and then transition into the project review. And then once they've had the discussion and review of the projects, open it up to comment. Similar to how we would do a work session leading into a public hearing. Um, open it up to public comment for twenty days and then go into the decision. On what will be added to the docket, added to the preliminary or not added at all. And then. The final piece is the order that we establish, the items on the docket.
And so the opportunity for the planning commission to comment as well as the public is that twenty day written comment period. Um, so there isn't necessarily a public hearings, um, but we will definitely let you know, um, that comment period open, so if you. If you do have anything you wanna share.
It's usually, usually a very robust.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any questions about docking, um? Commissioners? It really, it becomes your work plan, so tha- that's why we thought it'd be important to give you a preview of. What's gonna be moving forward to the board.
This is not really helpful.
And there'll be a lot more of information online, um, so we can send out a link. Um, so that, you know, as we develop those project sheets, um, and we have the briefing. Briefing packets, all those will be available, so that you can look through them. Um, so the. A few things were mentioned on that docket, um, that are gonna be coming to you in the next two years, and so. Your, the upcoming meetings, we're hoping will be like a primer on. Both joint code updates as well as sub-area planning, so. In the last few years, we updated all the joint plans, and of course, those are the long-range visions. Now we're coming back and gonna be doing the joint code, so you'll get, get to see more of Leah. Um, Leah Davis is our lead um for joint codes and joint plans. Um, but to kick that off, um, really walking through just what a joint plan is, what a joint code is. How they're related, what is that process we go through, um, cause it is a, we're a very unique county in that we do this. Regional collaboration, um, and planning for our U G As. Um, so that's gonna be upcoming, um, in February as well as. An introduction to the Nisqually Sub area plan, so coming right off, right off having the open house. Just coming to the planning commission and like, here's what we've heard, this is what sub-area planning looks like, trying to get that. Early feedback from the planning commission, so even as Brian Benjamin is our planner on that, even as he starts drafting. Drafting the updates to that plan that, you know, your feedback can be reflected, um, before it comes in, you know. In a draft form. So that's just tying what, what you saw on the docket sheet to what's gonna be coming forward and, and the next two meetings. Um, and then I just wanted to provide a quick update on the comp plan, um, so. We have selected a consultant. Um, we are extremely excited with the consultant team, um. And we are prepping all of the contracts for final approval with board at the end of the month. Um, so you might get to meet them as soon as February. Think that they would love to attend one of the meetings. Um, and so we're also working on the timeline. Um, as you noted, Chair Casino. It's gonna be a very aggressive timeline to try to get through the call plan. Um, through the end of November, so start thinking about things that we can do to help support your work moving forward. Um, we're gonna be doing the best we can on our end to engage the community in a meaningful way. Prepare all the necessary documentation that the state is requiring specifically on climate and housing. And packaging those things to bring to you, so you might see pieces of things like housing and climate. To ensure that we're getting as much feedback as possible, we might bring things that are, it's like, this is ready, let's bring this piece. And then have to table some discussions until we have some of the other technical work done, cause a lot of it is technical. Um, and just to give you an idea of the complexity, we've got two different funding sources feeding into. Four different consultant contracts just to get the work done and just all the coordination and collaboration around that. Um, so we have some ideas around outreach that we'll be bringing back in February. Um, we also hope to start sharing, um, the survey. Uh, survey report from that first phase of outreach. Um, so more to come, I just wanna let you know that there is a lot happening. Um, and you'll be seeing it sooner rather than later. Yeah.
Uh, you, I think you answered this in December, but can you remind us, are there any open positions within all of this on slide ten?
No.
Your fault.
And I am so excited about that. Don't recruit anyone, Commissioner Day, Department of Ecology has so many openings, don't take it out of our staff. Any questions before we jump into the discussion around cannabis and?
No, go ahead.
Okay, um, I'll tell you what we have found. Um, and. And it, it, it was a very confusing, um, meeting to try to figure out the motions, what they were for. And when they were cabled and when they were brought back up. Um, but what Maya was able to piece together, and of course, you're here to say yea or nay to that. And give any additional feedback you have, it's just from Mensah. Um, was that Commissioner Day. Um, you made motion to add language to two specific sections of agritourism stating, or if there are other site constraints. Which was related to citing non-agriculture-related uses on non-prime soils. So if you recall, it was the discussion around. We said that secondary uses, um, or ag tourism uses, um, could be located on up to one acre of non-prime soils. Um, and, uh. You wanted to make sure that we also, well, sorry. Um. We said that they could be on prime soils if they couldn't be accessed, um. Otherwise. And you added language uh about site constraints, so wetlands critical areas. Um, and that is reflected in the current draft, so expanding, expanding when we would allow uh use to be located on non. Um, on prime soils versus non-prime soils. And then Commissioner Halverson, who isn't here tonight, made a motion recommending approval of the package and code amendments with Mr. Day's amendment. But that was tabled until later in the meeting. So later in the meeting, the motion was brought back and a commissioner requested that a specific finding be added to the planning commission recommendation letter on cannabis and hemp. This finding was included in the planning commissioner's recommendation letter to the B O C C as finding thirteen. And then Maya also just wanted to highlight that it is regulated differently than agriculture in the county code and lies within different chapters than those with the proposed amendments, at least currently. Um, there was some discussion around whether or not to include cannabis and hemp in the definition of agriculture, agritourism. Staff did indicate was, it was beyond the scope of the current proposal. Um, but the stakeholder group and outreach didn't focus on this, on this, um, and an inclusion would require more robust outreach. To a different portion of the rural community. Um, so that's just sort of an accounting, at least when Maya went through the, the transcripts, um. Mr. Merriman has pointed out that the changes he'd like to see, he actually. Was kind enough to send me an email with the specific ones, um. Are, are limited in scope, um, and would. Add cannabis and hemp to certain sections. Um, and would have the agriculture definition updated to refer to cannabis and hemp. Um, so that's, that's at least what we were able to find out as staff. This is no longer in the planning commission's court, so what the recommendation was from the planning commission. Um. That went in the recommendation letter was that the planning commission finds that county should consider reviewing cannabis and hemp regulations as a future docketed development code item. Which would allow for that more comprehensive review. Which would allow for that more comprehensive review that would include some of the comments that came up tonight, that it's not just cannabis and hemp. There are also restrictions to the minimum amount of acreage needed to establish a new cannabis outdoor operating facility. And then it goes beyond just the long-term agriculture district that it, you know, you'd have to touch R, R, R one five, R, R one ten, R, R one twenty, L T A. To, to address the concerns that were raised.
What were the questions from Commissioner Edwards?
Oh, I think it was just wanting, so Mr. Merriman just testified yesterday at the public hearing that it was his understanding the planning commission moved to update the definitions and like, per the, per his request, update the definitions to refer to cannabis and hemp. And that wasn't done. Staff did not make those updates to the public hearing draft that went to the board. What we did do is put in the recommendation letter what I read to you, which is consider it more com, you know, more comprehensively.
Can we just play the email up on the big screen that I sent you? That came from the fifteen email string with Maya Prior.
Commissioner, pass me yours. You have something?
Yeah, I was going to ask the same question you did. I'm just curious, what is the, are the county commissioners considering something? I feel personally like we were. Hold maybe we're not one hundred percent accurate information on what are limitations of what we were allowed to make a motion for. I think our intent was to meet the needs that were conveyed by the community. And. I think that we were just told, oh, you can only make something in this limited range. And so we did that, but. I would like it communicated to the county commissioners that are asking these questions, what we intended.
We can do that at the work session next week as if, if the planning commission.
It was very nonspecific. I mean, Commissioner Edwards didn't want to move forward and he was just listing the different things that people had brought up in public comment that. Raised a question for him to want to get more information about.
I get it.
He didn't really make anything specific. And I, I, I said the same thing, frankly. I went through the three questions that I had based on public comment. I don't know the scope of this. You know, I mean, I, I do understand the concept of, you can't just amend a definition in one place and then you have a whole other code related to it. That's exactly where you get conflicts, inconsistencies, litigation, problems of interpretation. So if you're, I do understand the idea that if this needs to be done, it might need to be done in a more comprehensive way and looked at, rather than commissioners just sticking. It in, you know, in one place, but I don't know. I haven't, we haven't. It's not presented as one, one of our decision point either. So we may get into it on January twenty-fifth work session or we may not. I don't, I couldn't say.
That was the feedback that staff shared that Mr. Merriman has, has provided a, a lot of suggestions for code updates. Related to cannabis hemp and they would be changes to multiple chapters across the code. And so.
And you haven't had the resources to assign staff to correlate all that, to even see where that needs to go yet?
No. So the, 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 the changes that were presented as part of the ag code updates were specifically recommended by the stakeholder work group. And we only had about a month to put those together and bring them around to the various stakeholder, additional stakeholders. And that wasn't, that wasn't something that was identified. And then when we did start looking into it, it, it isn't just a simple add, add a reference.
Do you have the resourcing to figure all that out before your work session on the twenty-fifth to inform the B O C C? Probably not, huh?
Oh, I mean, I, it, it would be easy to identify the different code sections that currently, currently speak to. Speak to this, but it, it is a different chapter and then reference points to that chapter. And so if you added something new, you would potentially create conflicts with a whole nother set of regulations. Which, you know, if, if a property owner comes into the building development center. It's like, well, how does this fit in with all this other stuff? So it is more of a resource issue. It has been something, it's actually on the preliminary docket right now. Mr. Merriman submitted a, a docket proposal in the last docket cycle. And so it is there and now it's, it's that plus the planning commission recommendation to take a look at it. But I, I mean, I would say as from staff's perspective, it still makes more sense to look at it comprehensively. It is, it is a, it is more than just a reference.
Please. So speaking of comprehensively, would it make sense to start with the comp plan? To address it specifically?
Yeah. I mean, we're, we're updating chapters of the comp plan that would be the policy framework.
The code changes would.
But it could also just be docketed as a separate, separate project. It wouldn't be a comp plan update necessarily be development code one. So doesn't, doesn't fall under that only, you know, only act one time a year.
If the board doesn't want to take this from preliminary to full docket, we could still work through this through comp plan.
Potentially, I'm not sure the code update, the, the code update piece is still going to be a heavy lift. So if, if I would assign like staff resources, I would definitely say it's a point two five to point five. Cause there were a lot of.
It's a big project then.
Well, there's a lot of stakeholders that were involved in the original adoption of the chapter that currently regulates cannabis. And so we would want to make sure that we are engaging those stakeholders with any updates. And the, and then this is a group that has really encouraged us to. But to engage. And so I would, I would really hesitate to say like, let's, let's start making changes to something where we know that there is. At least in the past or historically been a lot of community feedback.
And how long was, were those codes developed?
Do you know offhand, is it the last ten years? Twenty six, so seven years. So they're, they're not some of the older ones in the, in the code, like L T A was thirty plus years old.
My, my comment is maybe even seven years ago is pretty old because the times are changing. And I was a little surprised for my very conservatively raised eighty-one-year-old mother to request for Christmas a Bob Marley t-shirt. Around a very green foliage.
Well, I, so I, I guess I'm at the point that I'm not sure what other action the planning commission can have to help forward this process along for stakeholders or anybody else. But unless somebody wanted to suggest something.
I mean, what we could suggest is I, I, I still think it would be great if the, if the board took it up. I understand that, you know, it crosses different sections of code and the, you know, you haven't done the outreach on those sections that you've, you're crossing into. Short of that, I think, suggest, I mean, we've basically already suggested that it be a docketed item. So I'm not sure that we would need to re-suggest that, or if that would make any difference, particularly procedurally we're allowed to do that.
I, I, I think that message will probably be made.
In light of the lack of clarity at the hearing though, it would be good to clarify for the board. But the planning commission, what I'm hearing is you were. You intended to do, to make the recommendation that Mr. Merriman was talking about. And then staff can talk about why that might or might not be a good idea, I guess, but at least so that we have the clarity of what your motion was. Cause that was kind of thrown up.
Fair to say we intended to encourage it to be docketed and for them to vote to change it.
Yeah.
That second part's a helpful addition.
I guess you can tell them that on the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to. We could also do, we could provide a little bit more information about the different sections. That would have to be updated.
I mean, would it be possible at some point to consolidate the code there? Because I think over time it will probably feel very antiquated to have cannabis agriculture and regulation in a different place than other agriculture. Yeah.
Yes, that would be great. I mean, the fact that it does exist, I mean, it, it, it really does, it has its own chapter in the code and we didn't, we didn't establish it that way as staff. But in terms of updating it, it's, it's like making sure all those chapters are speaking to one another and they're consistent. And yeah.
So does it combine commercial and agricultural with like other?
Doesn't, doesn't reference it really as an agricultural. I mean, that, I think that, that's Mr. Merriman's concern is that it sort of sits outside of agriculture currently. And so trying to recognize it is an agricultural product and treat it more like other agricultural products that are grown here in Thurston County.
That's more like forestry or shellfish.
Yeah, so.
Could we move to recommend to the county commissioners that they integrate it with agriculture?
Well, there's a motion. Is there a second?
It's second then.
Okay, it's been moved to recommend to the board county commissioners that we integrate cannabis into the agricultural sections for our development code.
I guess I want to start with how we got here from my memory. So when, when the state law was passed, I believe the county commissioners at the time. Really didn't put any thing down as far as, you know, they, they wanted, instead of going code, they just went with, we're just going to say it's okay. And so I think that's why it got into its own separate addition. Because then, or when it was brought to us, you know, it was, oh no, we've got this kind of. Unabashed thing with cannabis going on and we thought we have to, we have all these things that are here. You know, it wasn't necessarily, it was more of a reaction of, we don't want to get in trouble for telling people no. And so it kind of got opened up and it got brought to the planning commission. And I don't remember specifics of where all the. Numbers came from like, you know, I'm thinking about the, what was mentioned earlier, the difference between thirty-seven and forty acres. You know, I can see that if marijuana farms are going to be that big, but they're not. You know, there's thousands. And I've, I've got a friend who has one. And I mean, the security cameras that he has up there, you wouldn't want to do more than an acre. He told, he actually told me that somebody, one of the inspectors came out and said that a marijuana farm in Washington state has more security footage than a prison. So that's, but I think like, but what I was saying, I think that we kind of got into this. One, we went one way with not having a lot and then kind of went, well, we need to move this back over here. And yeah, now it's time to. I mean, it's, it's time to look at it and say what's working and what's not, because now we've had. A system for several years. So we can, because when it was first done, you know, not only was it new to us, planning commissioners. It was new to everybody. And so I think, I mean, I can definitely think of some things that. Were done that probably needed to be changed. And I think that's probably a good idea. To move it more to an. Ag type of position. I think maybe there's some things that we have to look at on that, but I think that's. And it would, I mean, it was always nice to consolidate stuff, but sometimes you, I think maybe because of the. State regulations that follow marijuana. It may, maybe we look at it and go, well, maybe this does deserve its own. And a piece of the pie rather than. Infusing other stuff with it, so.
Any other further discussion on the motion?
Just to clarify, you're, you're saying we shouldn't go off half cocked?
The devil's always in the details, yeah.
I'm saying we shouldn't go off half cocked again. This is, this is probably on marijuana, this is probably the third time.
Well, we do, we do have a, a motion on the floor and we're ready to call for a vote.
Commissioner Passengers? Commissioner Nelson? Chair Casino? Vice Chair Day? Commissioner Hanson? Commissioner Bob Bar? Commissioner Kaiser?
Thank you very much. Thank you for forwarding that recommendation for us to the board. Any other staff update stuff?
No, I talked enough, unless you have any questions.
Which firm did you select for the complaint? For which war? Oh, yeah.
Or, oh, well, the, the different pieces are being done by different consultants. So we are going to be working on our interlocal, working on interlocal agreement with our regional partners to continue the housing allocation and land capacity analysis piece of housing. We are working with Public Works and hopefully one of their contractors to update the transportation chapter. And then the selected consultant for the housing and climate is Burke with Cascadia and Makers. So a Seattle-based team. Cascadia has direct experience working on the climate mitigation plan and climate adaptation plan. As well as some of the state guidance on the new climate element. And Burke, as well as Makers, has experience working with Department of Commerce on some of the housing guidance. As part of the new housing element. So we're really excited. I mean, they, they're a team that has a lot of experience, hands-on experience. With the kind of work that this county needs to do. And they have been supporting other counties in Central Puget Sound that went before us. So more to come.
Do you remember off the top of your head who the lead from Cascadia is?
Oh, got me there. I was hoping you were going to say Burke. I know Burke, because they're the lead. I could look at that.
All right. Well, then everybody take a look at their calendars. Our next meeting is scheduled for February seventh. We're tentatively going to start on our joint planning and the twenty twenty-four docketing process. Is there anybody that's not expecting to be able to make that meeting?
I expect to be here, but just to clarify, joint planning update is what, which joint planning?
Actually for the code, joint coding.
Sorry, it's, it's, it's like an overview of joint plan and a joint code.
Yeah.
Cause you, you all now have three joint codes to update.
Okay, I expect that we'll be seeing everybody. Our next meeting after that would be February twenty-first, where we should be starting our introduction to the sub area plan for Niskewalley.
Just, ju- just to make sure, are you, do we have planning commissioners going to that open house next week? I just want to make sure we, we publish a meeting notice if we've got more than, more than five.
I, I expect to go to the Niskewalley Subarea Plan Meeting.
What's the date time?
It's, is it four? Four, it's four to six.
On which date?
The twenty-third. It's the next Tuesday. It's not a big deal for us to post a special meeting notice. I just want to make sure we, we do get it posted.
I'd be interested.
I might go, but.
It's at the Billy Frank Junior Gym. So.
I'm maybe with probably only twenty percent.
So the chances that there will be six of us there are probably pretty darn slim.
Okay.
All right. And is anybody, so anyways, anybody expecting to not be able to make our regular planning commission meeting on February twenty-first? All right, then we'll expect to hopefully see everybody there. Now, for the good of the order, I just want to say that at our next meeting. Please bring any nominations for planning commission chair and vice chair and expect to have elections very soon after that. And I'll be glad to hand this off to the next person. Please.
If, if we're done with the election stuff?
Yeah.
I want to talk a moment about our rules of procedure. And our meeting times and dates and links and all of that, I feel like as a new body, we are up to re-decide any and all of these things. I would request related to the rules of procedure. That we revisit them. I think they're unclear or confusing or even contradictory at points. I think there's areas we could clean up and make more clear. I would request that the chair created as boss, a temporary committee, a governance committee to work together and to make recommendations to this body on ways we could improve our rules of procedure. And I'd be willing to serve on that if. Um, and I'd be willing to serve on that if requested. And I just, I, I'm totally fine with the times and dates of our meetings being their first and third Wednesdays. Um, and six thirty is fine by me, but maybe it's better for different timing for other people. Um, whatever we can do to accommodate our members and the public, uh, would be great. And anything we can do to shorten our meetings, I don't like these two and a half, three hour meetings. Um, so. Um, I, I know I do more than my fair share of talking, but, uh, anything for the next chair that they can do to make these meetings as. Quick and efficient as possible will be appreciated.
Not to, to skate out on this myself, but this might be a conversation that I had when we have full ten people seated.
Yeah, about the rules of procedure?
Yeah.
I mean, I think a committee can get started and they can join it if, if they want. I don't think we should make decisions until they're all seated. I agree with that, but.
You'd like to stand up a subcommittee now on rules of procedure?
Yeah.
Any other interest in somebody working on rules of procedure with Commissioner Halverson, Commissioner Day?
I love Barry, but I'm not.
I'm sorry.
Are you volunteering? Isn't that a power of the chair, make appointments?
Yeah, so we're, we'll stand up a subcommittee to review the rules of procedure and. Assign Commissioner Peskinger, Commissioner Day to it. If anybody else would like to join, please let Ashley know and she'll help coordinate you into the subcommittee. You're welcome. Does anybody else have anything for the good of the order? All right, well, with having no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, guys.
Thanks to Sonia for stepping in last minute. Very appreciative.